Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands where we stand under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
I'm due public comments, anybody wishing to speak? Or something that's not on the agenda, step forward. So you know, step forward, item three, approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
I second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda, any questions, concerns, issues? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. It does in fact pass. Item four consent agenda. Move, move on the consent.
Second.
Motion second on the consent agenda. Issues or concerns, anyone drag out? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. Public hearing, La Playa, who wants to? Doesn't matter. Oh, look at that backdrop.
Um, all right, so the La Playa submitted a special event application for La Jam, which will occur on August twenty third of this year. The request includes having music play until eleven P M. And then they're also requesting to close a portion of the alley to the north of their property from eleven A M on the twenty third to six A M on the twenty fourth. Um, city ordinance does require a public hearing for an event that goes past nine thirty with music and alcohol and notices were sent to property owners within three hundred fifty feet of the event and um, no feedback was given from neighboring properties. Submitto was reviewed by the police chief and public works director. And the police chief recommends two off duty officers for the event due to the size. And the applicant is present this evening if you should have any questions for them.
With that being said, we'll open the public hearing again when wishing to speak on the La Jam event, special event, please step forward to the podium. See no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing and open it to council.
My only concern was the eleven A M to, is it eleven A M? Concurring all the way to the next morning, six A M to be completely closed, is that, or am I misunderstanding that?
That's correct.
Okay, and we, we, from past experience, we never had any of the apartment cars or anybody coming forward with upset about that being perfect, thank you, just wanted to make sure.
Sean, you haven't changed the scope of this event at all as far as the hours really have you?
No, no, um, we went down to eleven o'clock last night, or last year, and we planned to do the exact same thing this year.
Okay.
We did have the band kind of scale back their volume as well and seemed to have less complaints, I think Dwight got a concurred on that, so. Um, and Kelly, we give actually all the apartment dwellers um, free passes to the event.
Oh.
So that they can come enjoy it tonight, so that's helped our lot.
Well, that's why, that's perfect.
But yeah, nothing, um, nothing has changed, Adam, as far as, we're hoping for a few more people this year, but um, um, scope as far as how it's set up and all, that's the same.
That was my only question, thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Anyone else? Okay. Counselors?
I move to approve the event.
I second it.
Motion and second to approve the special event permit for the La Playa. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. Uh, another one, and tax abatement, public hearing for tax abatement.
Yes, good evening, mayor and counselors. Um, up for your consideration this evening um, is a tax abatement request from Hanson Companies. Uh, so David Laurie and I have been working over the past several months with uh, Adam Hanson, who's the owner of uh, Hanson Companies on a new manufacturing facility, um, and if we can, Kelly, if you can switch the screen over to the laptop. So Hanson is proposing to build a new, not that again.
I think you look kind of nice over there.
So, um.
I love technical difficulties, huh?
Yeah. Always occurs, doesn't it? Um, so Hanson is proposing to construct a eighty-two thousand five hundred square foot building with a six thousand square foot office space. Um, they would be retaining uh, all their current employees in the community. Right now, they are located off of Pearl Drive and they've been there since about two thousand and five. Um, this is out in our industrial park off County Road one thirty-three. So sixty-one total jobs being retained along with about a dozen jobs being created over the next several years. Um, Adam Hanson is requesting subsidies to meet uh, the needs to in order to construct in Saint Joe. Uh, the request does require the public hearing and the subsidy that they're asking for is up to nine years with a not to exceed amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and thirty-eight. That abatement number would come from the city portion of the property taxes with taxes payable starting in twenty twenty-six. And the agreement would be a pay as you go arrangement, so essentially uh, once or twice a year, uh, Adam Hanson and Hanson Companies would be reimburse those taxes. Um, the agreement does stipulate, you know, that he would have to continue his operations throughout the duration of the abatement agreement. Uh, again, that budget impact would be um, three hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and thirty-eight uh, starting in twenty twenty-six with that duration of nine years. The E D A did review this at their last meeting and did recommend unanimous approval of the request. This request did score very high on our evaluation, um, part of our evaluation for um, incentives is that uh, job creation. This one, in accordance to our subsidy policy, any project that is twenty-six jobs or more being created or retained in the community is a five out of five on the, on the scoring chart. Uh, so this did score high on that. Uh, just FYI for the council, there will be um, some zoning elements that will be coming forward to you on, at your May twentieth council meeting as well. Um, they don't pertain to the agreement itself, uh, but just a heads up. Uh, the applicant is also on the Zoom call as well, um, he wasn't able to be in here in person due to some traveling commitments. So what we're requesting and looking for, for action tonight is, one, to conduct the public hearing and then two, to consider adoption of that resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero twenty-five, which approves that property tax abatement. And then also the authorization and execution of the abatement agreement. With that, be happy to answer questions if you have any prior to the public hearing.
With that, we're gonna, let's open the public hearing and close, okay Bob? Let's open the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on the tax abatement for Hanson Holdings, please step forward. No one's standing for, we'll close the public hearing and now we'll open the council, counselor Lozso.
Yeah, Laurie or Nate, uh, is there any uh, positive revenue after the, you, uh, the abatement? In a yearly basis?
The um, the abatement is for the full city tax up to that three hundred and ninety-six thousand for nine years, so after that assume, you know, we would.
So year to year, there will be no positive?
We won't see, yeah, we'll, we'll abate the entire city portion of the taxes.
For those nine years.
Any other counselors? Looking for a move.
I move to approve the uh, resolution twenty twenty-four O two five to approve the tax abatement for Hanson.
I second it.
Motion and second approving resolution twenty twenty-four twenty-five, the tax abatements for Hanson LLC. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion does carry. Uh, street closure.
Can I get clarification that that included the tax abatement agreement as well?
Oh, I just.
The resolution within the tax abatement agreement. I just wanted to confirm that it was like a package deal.
Two separate motions?
I think, just clarify if that was the package deal on the resolution.
Yeah, so the.
My motion was the package deal.
Very good, thank you. Uh, sorry, let me, let me, let me. Street closure, White Peony. You know?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, um, so we had received a street closure request from Wright Peony, um, Lindsay, the owner is in the audience. And the closure would be for a portion of First Avenue Northwest, and you can see that up on the map there, so it would be from Ash Street um, to just right before the entrance into Saint Joseph Meat Market, so about a little over half a block. The event would be on June first and the request is to close that portion from six A M to six P M. Um, and the closure would be for their summer market event. And that would be um, an extension of their event that they're also having at their other location, which is near Luxembourg. Um, so the ask before you tonight is um, to consider whether, whether to approve the street closure request for the event on June first.
So moved.
Motion and second approving the, uh, sorry, street, street closure.
Was there a public hearing required for this?
No.
Oh, good.
Just internally. So I just have a, a single question and um, has Perfect Fit been included in the conversation? Okay. Okay, very good.
The two buildings, Perfect Fit and another house on the west side of the street, do they have any driveways that conflicts with the street closing?
If, if, I mean, could, could we ask you if you could, it's hard to hear, it doesn't get picked up yet.
Yeah.
Sorry, the Perfect Fit does have a driveway, um, typically when we host this event, this is our fourth annual, obviously haven't done it in Saint Joe yet. Um, but we do go around, we, I made um, signs and stake signs and to, we literally go to businesses and like knock on doors or talk to the business owners to see if there's what we can do to make the whole situation, well, work well with them. They're not open the Perfect Fit on Saturday, but I did reach out to the owner to see if they'd want to be a part of this in any way. So I would imagine we'd lock off, they have their personal driveway there, but I don't believe it's for um, any uh, customer use. Now, the White House on the other side is um, W R's in um, addition to their business and they would actually be working with us on this market as well.
Okay.
Kevin, so I am not in favor of closing this half a block on a Saturday in June. Um, and with all due respect to your business and what's all happening there. Um, I just think, I say to my fellow counselors or what, what's gonna be in the street that we're closing? What, what's gonna be out in the street?
Sure, so.
Is it product or merchandise or what?
We, so what we, when we start, so this is our fourth annual, um, at our other location, we grew to having fifty-four vendors or ten by ten spots, kind of. It's a little bit similar, if I had to compare it to like the Mill Stream Arts Festival, but not. Um, so we're looking at ten by ten spaces for local community entrepreneurs, small businesses, artisans. Um, so in, you know, I worked with W R to see, we have a grass area to see if that would be a possibility to put, you know, to get this started there. However, we've had multiple requests, uh, we have a waitlist of, I think, well, it's over twenty now as of this moment, but we have fifty vendors there, twenty on the waitlist and what it would be is, um, we mark off ten by ten spots for each vendor um, to be selling their products, so it's um, another comparable would be on a much smaller scale, the Little Croft Falls Craft Fair. Um, when, so we have a small business initiative behind our boutique. To me, community connection is so important and serving other small businesses, because quite frankly, I've been there when starting different businesses. Um, so with our small business initiative, we're drumming up how we're gonna support local customers that we knew were makers, creators and so on. My intentions were never originally to be a Little Croft Falls Craft Fair ever, but it has grown so much. We have um, last year, the summer market, we had thirty vendors, um, the first three years, we had thirty vendors and our foot traffic was well over nine hundred people, our checkouts were, I, close to five hundred. Um, for us personally, we have vendors that sell out their product and everything and um, for us personally, it brought thirty-five thousand dollars in revenue. Um, for our fall two-day market, we brought in over, so we did fifty vendors, we brought in foot traffic well over, we estimated with other businesses about twenty-five hundred people. Um, sales for us were over sixty-five thousand for a two-day event and we had checked out eight hundred and, I think it was sixty-four people or somewhere around there, so.
So this isn't, so you've got vendors.
Vendors.
This isn't, you taking your product out onto the street?
No.
And the vendors are vending what?
So we have different vendors that.
Just briefly, just.
Sure. Um. We have artists, we have candles, we have uh, flowers, we have.
Great, like mill stream.
Yep, essentially.
Sounds like, okay.
So.
And this is the first time we've seen this, you didn't like go through C V B or E D A, you're dropping this on us a month before.
I know.
We got less than one month.
Yes.
And this is a new thing, you haven't done this in Saint Joe before.
Not in Saint Joe, no, um, I've been in communication with Mary Bruno to kind of get, because we've been open, um, it was a year, so it's been about a year and a half in Saint Joe.
Right.
Um, so last year, you know, the spring, summer market was not an option, because we were just trying to figure out our business, but I, with how things have been moving forward, our fall market was so successful that we have gotten emails and messages every single day about people joining since we opened it up to everybody and I told um, our team, I said, how can we, what can we do differently? And when we originally moved here, I told Mary Bruno, when we, in our discussion with Mill Stream and of the shop small crawl, I'm like, I know, I need to bring our peony markets to Saint Joe, like, we're missing an opportunity here, especially for space and, and the people and whatnot, so. I do have on reserve too for parking situations, I know that's an issue at actually both locations. Um, we've come up with a plan to do even like a shuttle, because we're gonna have originally most of our traffic in fifty vendors, food, music and everything at our other location. Here, however, you know, it's knowing we're in thirty. Here, um, so for, we have twenty on our waitlist and we've been in communication with them to let them know the process of kind of what we're going through, nothing guaranteed by any means, especially with it being only a month away, um, but so we, with mentioning to them, so I, we're gonna cut it off at thirty if approved. So we're hoping we start on a smaller scale here and then I have many, many more details for future plans.
So what about people that want to go to the meat market to buy some meat? Can they get in off of first based on what you're closing down?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Um, we usually have at our other location food trucks that we bring in for experience, like our, not only do I want to support these other small makers and entrepreneurs, but experience is key. And with the meat market and instead of bringing in a food truck, um, our conversation with them once approved would be, you know, obviously they have their brat sales and everything, if there was a way to work with them to make that even more successful. If, I haven't talked to anybody from the business yet, but we did a brat sale for uh, Luxembourg Rep Club last year and did phenomenal sales and we gave the profits to them.
Where do you do your event in Luxembourg? You don't close down Highway fifteen, do you?
We don't, we have a decent sized um, parking lot, we have a business right next to us and actually a couple sites. But the business next to us, we get to approve the dates, we're in communication with them and then we use our entire parking lot, we have a grass area, we stake things off. We have it very coordinated, very detailed.
I've been to that one, it's been awesome, yeah, you do a good job.
Thank you, we, we, to me, it's not just about customer service to who we serve, it's also the service that we give to our vendors, so we have people coming back to us because we're, we're very well vetted in the whole process from the very beginning through, I have um, if someone wants to apply to be a part of it, we have a detailed slide of rules and expectations and marketing. Our marketing is incredibly successful, I think in two weeks only, like, our social media event got well over, I don't know, thirteen hundred people interested in the event.
So with your uh, time allotted, you, you would be done and cleaned up by that six?
I did give room for that, knowing people are packing up and everything, now we've been, we're open in our location from nine to four, our market typically is nine to two. Um, so we very much could cut it off at two o'clock, giving everybody time to clean, so it'd be well. Um, my plan too, as we do at the other location, you know, how things are left is very important to me. So we do have a bathroom that we rent for outside, just to make the experience well, we set up garbages everywhere and do a full cleanup when we're done as well.
How many food trucks?
At our other location, we usually have two to three, I would say.
And where are the food trucks going to be here?
I'm not planning on a food truck here this year by any means, it would just be given the opportunity to the brats, yeah, since it's so short term. The only, if we were to, um, wandering cow is a part of our uh, market at the shed location in Luxembourg. And the only thing I would give them opportunity if they wanted to just be local here um, instead, so.
So Lindsay, the challenge that I have is that it seems every year the council is considering a new something that results in closing down a street or part of a street. So you're here, Joe Town Blocks was here last meeting, wanting to close down Minnesota. Um, it's just, I know that one of our attractions is that we're a, a festival type town. Um, but it's just like, where do we draw the line as to how many weekends we're gonna close off some of our streets, so? I think it's gonna be very successful if we grant you the closure of it and what you want to do, but I just have a, kind of a broader question. Might relate to you know, the chief in terms of, you know, how much more do we have to monitor closing streets, this, that and the other things, so? I'm done. I'm done. My concerns.
I think it's a good event, because the spell over during the day brings it to the other businesses.
I agree with Bob.
I agree.
Can I ask a question or two? So, I know, I, I'm safe, the bad event or anything, and I kind of agree with Kevin, at some point, well, at some point, we're gonna have to say.
Yeah.
Is there, is the arbitrary number on how many events we really can have, but where are the vendors gonna put their stuff?
True, um, actually, your question in regards to where do you cut that off, was it that process of mine? Because if, if I was in your shoes, I'd completely understand um, that process. The vendors, you know, would be, we're gonna have them um, situated and organized on the road.
Or, okay.
Walking through there, yeah.
Okay.
Now, for this, especially being so short term, you know, I kind of went over with Caitla, I gave her proposal for a longer line on the road and then I thought, you know, this is, it's too short term, we need to like, so I wanted to make sure and looking at where the space is, cutting off before the meat market um, driveway was my concern to make sure that we keep this very manageable for right now. Next year, I hope that we can expand for the whole town, but.
Well, my suggestion would be, did you look at alley or kind of storage stuff? Because that's probably not used very much in June. I would not think so, but I don't know. Just if they needed a place for vendors to go or something from, you know, the back behind two bits all the way to the other connection or something, I just suggest, and that's all. I mean, uh, this is fine by me, I think it's, it's, we're gonna learn as we go and but that's another area, I think, that we don't use that alley very much and we give them some additional space for storage or vendors wherever else.
Well, and hopefully, if you're going to collaborate with the Saint Joe Meat Market, that they would be willing to be working with their area too, maybe, you know, who knows for next year?
Yes, and.
You know.
We have a really great relationship with a couple of our events we've already done, so that's definitely a future thought out process as well.
I thought you were done.
I'm not done.
You said.
I know.
You said.
Where are people gonna go to the bathroom?
She brings it.
She just said. Yeah, we'll rent, we'll rent, we have obviously somewhere, we have only one bathroom in our place, we do rent two bathrooms on the outside, just to mention.
Why did you do that? Lindsay, how did you do that? That's amazing.
No.
That was very ominous.
Yeah.
Okay, Kevin, you're done now, you said. Okay. So this is just approval of the street closure, is it? Kayla, is this just approval of the street closure?
Yes.
Okay, and Dwight, anything on this? Like, you need extra, not knowing the numbers or anything?
Nope, I try to be a good listener and, and many years ago, council member Lozso reminded me that only the council has the authority to close streets and alleyways, so that's why he's before you.
I'll get you.
Hey.
Ten minutes.
That's good. That's good recall, Dwight. So looking for, uh.
I move.
I second.
We're in discussion, it's been moved, you know, it's already been moved, it's already on the table.
Oh.
Sorry, I lost my head.
I, I.
Motion second to go ahead with the street closure for this event on June one. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Motion prevailed for one. Thank you, Lindsay. Uh, item eight, fire relief update request.
Yeah, Mr. Keith.
You got like a ping pong.
I'm uh, Keith, well, you have the president of the Relief Association for the Fire Department. And um, every year we do a review of our special fund for you guys, um, just where we're at, where we want to be um, from there, so last year or this current year, we are at thirty-four hundred per year of service, I believe you guys all have this summary sheet in your packet there, so. Um, currently in, we're at thirty-four hundred per year of service for our pension and we would like to look at just based on the numbers that we had there, raising that to thirty-six hundred to twenty, twenty-five. And like, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Second. Motion and second, and what is the new one, thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Yep.
Thirty-four to thirty-six. Motion and second, uh, increasing fire relief benefit level increase, any other good discussion?
Yes. So in a scenario like this, with the councilman's panic on the fire department, does he need to recuse himself, Murphy, or not? I'm just curious, this is just a point of information.
I will if necessary.
I'm just asking David whether his panic should recuse himself because he is on the fire department.
I will answer that by saying without giving my legal opinion, because my legal opinion is worth what I paid for my law degree, which is nothing. I, what I will say is I'll go off, off past practice, um, in what I've seen done in other cities, because it, it's actually fairly rare that a city doesn't have somebody that's on the fire department on the city council. I will say that I've seen in the past that um, they do vote on it, um, based on the fact that it goes through the, the vetting process with the other um, the other entities, so um, I will say that I have seen them vote on this, so I guess I wouldn't say that it, it's a conflict of interest.
Thank you. So Kevin, according to David, I'm your token firefighter.
Anyways.
Yeah, boss.
According to me, my, my practice is if, if the public, if there's maybe a perception of, you know, conflict of interest or whatever, you know, in, in my world, I would step down just to forget about it, you know, just not to have that perception out there, not that it will be, but it might be. That's how I.
Yeah, we've had other councils step down on other votes, but uh, either way. Motion and second, increase the annual contribution from thirty-four to thirty-six. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, good. All right. Thanks. All right, number nine. Hey Scott.
Mister Mayor and City Council and David, rest of the staff, um, this is a better visit than my first visit that I came to the council and to, to the team here. Um, Connecticut has been looking at revamping our work on behalf of the community center and we've, we've accomplished quite a bit on the agenda this last month, this is my second month here. Um, so I want to give you a little bit of an update. Um, there are some good things going on and we're quite pleased with that. Um, we've heard, we've heard some things that the counselors have said and um, I don't know the proper way to hand these out, so Bob, you would start with. So Bob, you would start to include what you. Pass down. Make sure that everyone has a copy of it. One of the things we heard loud and clear. Is a concern to make sure that. Contributions that were coming in for the community center were relegated appropriately for the donor's intent. Between Saint Joseph and the Saint Joseph Project and the YMCA Water Park Project uh in Saint Cloud. What was happening prior to, well, a month ago, was um the pledge form that was used in the project. Was designed to be used for contributions to go to the water park. Contributions to go to Saint Joe, contributions to be divided between them. Um, we thought that that has a potential for some error. And so to avoid any potential of error, the pledge forms that we're gonna be using for all the solicitations for the Saint Joe. Uh, project are only for Saint Joe. The only option is that the contribution when a donor uses this form goes to Saint Joe. We wanna uh, we want to avoid any kind of misclassification of contributions coming in. To make sure that all Saint Joe gifts go to Saint Joe, and there's not, there are no clerical errors, there are no problems. We've worked pretty closely with Lori and with Leah and the team at the Y to make sure that those contributions that are coming in. Are getting um designated properly, so that Saint Joe contributions are for Saint Joe. We can't speak necessarily to how thank you notes have gone out in the past. But one of the things that we are going to do is that is that Kinetik will also be sending a Saint uh. A thank you note to those contributions that we have on our records as well uh on behalf of the work for the committee. We've, we've gone through some changes in the committee. Uh Patty Wetterling is uh convinced that this is a great project and is sold on it a hundred and ten percent. So Patty has has upgraded her commitment um from honorary chair to being a full-time active chair. Now, knowing that Patty has a lot on her agenda right now, she's tasked four other uh other committee members to help her. Um, Corey Ellert, uh Amy Bonfig. Anne Reisner, did I say that right? I thought I got it right. Anne Reisner from La Playa coming coming over, and then Carol Breeze from the uh the college is coming over as well. And those four are going to serve as as for want of a better term, a kitchen cabinet. For um for Patty to help keep the ca- the campaign moving forward and working with her and filling in. The campaign, understanding that it's all about spheres of influence and developing relationships. We're also adding in in the process of recruiting additional committee members. Um, we've had two names surface so far, and the committee will be meeting tomorrow afternoon at three thirty. At Goman Construction to make sure that we uh we talk about that. At Kinetik, we have gone through. The original wealth screening that we did back even before we ba- began the project. And we looked at the the original two thousand three hundred and so. Names that we screened within this area based on the assets uh of folks that could contribute. Um, and we've identified around around a hundred and eighty of them. That were that are worth a second look. When we first did the screening about a a year and a half ago, and we looked at those donors. Um, we had fewer people on the committee. And we asked the committee members, who do you know from these donors? And and the list was was shorter. As the committee has expanded and the spheres of influence have grown. It's worth it for us to go back to that list and see who's there, who other people knew. Because we we now have a brand new list of people that we know, and we're excited about that. We are honing in on relationship building from the committee. One of the things that we did see. Uh, pretty clearly is making sure that. Making sure, I'm trying, trying to be careful not to throw anybody under the bus on this. But to make sure that when we are doing a tour of the Saint Cloud Y. Or we're talking about the Saint Joseph Community Center Project as its standalone. That the donor is not necessarily being solicited on the very first visit that we have. That we actually take time to develop a relationship and make sure that we know what the donor's intent is. And make sure that that they know what the project is, so it's all about relationship. We think that that's important for the Saint Joe side especially. Because we want to make sure that there's ongoing support for the project after the building gets built. We don't want that project to s- we want the relationships to be there into the future, not just a transaction. For this, we want to keep that going. In that light, we also have recognized that one of the important things is to make sure that those donors or those that we have solicited. Get an update. On just what's happening with the project, where are we with the project? How much has been collected, who, what, uh, not specifically as to the donor's names and amounts. But at least conceptually as to what's happening with the project, that there is forward motion on it, and things are moving forward. So that way, maybe those donors that have been hesitant about fulfilling their commitment or making their commitment. Will feel better that that there's security, there's a plan, the project is moving forward. So we are in the process, started it this morning, of creating what would hopefully be. We don't know that it will be quarterly. We think that it will be every form or three times a year. Instead of of four times a year, uh that we would do a newsletter to both the current donors to let them know the progress. Um, and then potential donors to let them know, and those donors that would have, that have solicited has said, no, not now, but maybe later. So we're working on that. The committee is is fired up, Patty's excited. Um, the committee meeting tomorrow, based on the RSVPs at three thirty. We've got a pretty good RSVP list of folks that are coming to the to the committee meeting. Um, those that have not have all been given the opportunity to attend via Zoom. And we've had several responses on Zoom. So we're seeing, we're seeing a new life and a new energy in the campaign that that the campaign hasn't seen in a while. And I want to again assure you on this, on this additional visit to the council. That um I'm committed to making sure that that doesn't drop. Any questions?
When, when do you see Kinetik sending out the update to people that have made commitments, the newsletter thing you talked about? When is that gonna go?
I think that that there's a newsletter that will go out that will be broader in nature, but there there are donors that we're going to need to speak to. On an individual basis uh in the interim. I would see the newsletter going out within the next two to three weeks. Um, no later than a month, but in the next two to three weeks, we would have the newsletter going out. Because the list, Kevin, at this point is is pretty controlled. It's not, it's not a a huge list.
And do you know how much the the Y has secured in pledges for the water park to date?
I do not, and but I will be seeing the director of the Y tomorrow, and I'll find out.
Okay. That's all I had.
Thanks.
Is he, does he come to your, our collaborations, like the meeting tomorrow? Is he gonna be there?
He has been invited. There's, there's one thing that we want to be very careful of in that. We don't work for the Y of Saint Cloud. We don't work for the water park. We work for Saint Joe. So we want to be absolutely certain that our time and our efforts and our energies are focused on the community center for Saint Joseph. Because that's, that's our project, that's our full commitment. Uh, that being said, there are donors that are making, are considering, let's say it that way, that are considering significant investments. Because it's a regional ask as well as just a Saint Cloud and Saint Joe ask. And we want to make sure that we don't, we don't. Portray to anyone that we're not part of that regional plan. That the Saint Joe uh Community Center is integral to the rest of the plan, and the rest of the plan is integral to Saint Joe. It's not, it's not us and them, it is all of us. But our focus and our energy and and what will determine success for us is the Saint Joseph Community Center, not the water park.
I'm, I'm just being a little blunt, because I don't think he should be. That's my opinion. Um, this is the Saint Joe Community Center. I do believe and I understand that he is a inter- but we're renting, he's gonna run it for us, and we have a contract with him. So if you really think he's bringing in the money for us. That I would like to, I, how much money is he bringing to the table with this?
I I can't answer that question to you. I don't know that right now. Um, but tomorrow I will find out more. Excuse me.
Hypothetically, you're looking at the whole picture here of the regional donation pool. Of how many, how much of that do you think has been? I'm gonna use the word misdirected, and that's pretty heavy.
I don't know that any has been misdirected. Where, where I, where I think that we've had some challenges about is that. I think. Um, I think that there may have been premature asks that have done, that donors have taken a tour of the Y. And when they get done with a tour of the Y. They get asked for a significant gift before they were ready to be asked for a significant gift. And the relationship haven't been built, and no one is, so I I think that, I think that there needs to be. Rather than saying misdirected, I think it's miscommunicated. I think it's us going back to some of those folks. And making a case that, no, this project is good, it stands on its own merits. It runs without a water park. It doesn't need the water park to succeed in Saint Joe. And frankly, the water park doesn't necessarily need Saint Joe for the water park to succeed. But they are both stronger if both succeed. So.
I, I, are you talking about the water park for Saint Cloud?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just clarifying.
Yep.
Is he doing the presentations when they go on for donors?
Uh, I don't know that, because I've not been a part of any of those presentations.
That's another question you're gonna find out tomorrow?
Have to find out.
Okay.
And and I've not, I've not attended any of those, Kelly. When I've done presentations in the past with donors. I haven't felt the need to include the Saint Cloud Water Park in those presentations that I've done.
Yep, so I got the um, and Amy and I got the annual report, the twenty twenty three YMCA annual report in the mail. Um, a few days ago. And I think that it's a very positive report. The Y is coming out of COVID. They have more memberships now, more revenue now than they did two, three years ago. Um, page eight of that report lays out the case for the water park and lays out the case for Saint Joe. And it, it makes sense in terms of what the Y wants to do to spread its impact in the region. And how Saint Joe is a key, a key part of that. So I just want to go on record that that annual report, I think, could be a tool for. Uh, the committee or a tool for potential donors.
And the brochures um that we're using right now, the the marketing materials that we're using. They both articulate the needs of of the community center in Saint Joseph and the water park separately. On their own merits, but yet they're designed to work together. So that again, folks don't think that for want of a better term, I can't think of a nice way to say this, forgive me. We're not schizophrenic in our approaches there, that that we know what they're doing, and they know what we're doing, and it fits. It's, it's a piece that works together.
The other point I want to make is. We need. The Y, it's a world-class asset. We need that to happen here in Saint Joseph. And one of the anecdotal part of why I'm saying that is. Uh, my wife and I are going to a uh not related to what we're doing here. A nonprofit event on a Sunday in June. And this organization is gonna utilize that really nice uh by the Sartell Community Center, you know, the lake and the walking track. That's where the event is gonna happen. And. Sartell Community Center is closed on Sundays.
You mean they can't do it?
They're gonna do it, but they're gonna have to rent the porta potties, because we're gonna have two hundred people there. And my point is, if the city runs it, and that's where Sartell's at. They can't staff it now. They don't have operating hours, like the YMCA is open seven days a week. You know, most, you know, maybe they're closed on Christmas or whatnot. But that Sunday in the summer, Sartell Community Center is closed. So I just don't think it's an option to fall back on the city. Running its, our own community center. It has to happen with the Y, in my opinion.
Oh, I don't disagree with that. I just think that it it should be coming from the community of Saint Joseph. You know what I mean, our asking.
And that's where we're expanding our reach.
And I don't deny that he should be on the committee. I just don't think he should be running it. It really should be coming from us.
It is us.
It is.
It is us. Um, and I I guess the last thing that I would say, Mister Mayor, is indulge me for a personal comment. I appreciate your willingness, the council's willingness, the staff's willingness to um. To allow us to come in and revamp and re-energize this. And I I want to say that on a personal level, this is a project that I want to see happen. I bought into this. I like this project, and I want to see it happen. And I wanted to say thank you for allowing this project to continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. So I'm not done, because the reason I wanted to put this on the agenda was, are we still paying Kinetik?
We've not received uh um invoice since they revamped the contract and um. They were not charging us for May and June, I believe.
Okay, so what is the agreement on? I mean, I know your CEO said two months. I've thrown back at the end of last year, five months. What is the final? I mean, I don't know what that number is. I don't, Scott, can you tell? Oh, I get it. Everybody says that here, but if all of a sudden we get an invoice and it's not to our satisfaction, I'm gonna be wholly disappointed.
Ma'am, I would suggest that.
Can you please, Scott? Thank you. I mean, it's one of the sticking points that we had to reshuffle the deck. We lost a lot of time.
And we want to build.
The CEO said two months, and I said, hey, five or six months, because we don't know what we're reloading.
The, the question's gotta be for Terry Gibson, our chief operating officer, to respond to. And I can, I can let Terry know to reach out to you, to reach out to David or more whoever.
The last time I met with Brian, I said five months, easy, and I haven't heard back from him. And he said the same thing you did, right now. I gotta reach back to Terry. So. I just want to know what the number is.
I don't know what that number is.
I get it, but at some point, that's gotta come to a head.
I can do that. I'll work on it. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Bye tomorrow.
Nope, is that good? Thank you, Scott. Yeah, and and Lori, Lori, it's good to know that we haven't been paying that, but that's some information we you might want to share at some point. Uh, what's next?
Any reports?
Department report. Engineering? No, thank you. Anybody? David?
Uh, just one quick one. It is uh last week, I was at the uh MCMC City Managers Conference of in uh. In Mans at uh in Deswa, and um it was, I thought it was very good. Probably, I haven't been there for quite a while. I think they've upped their game. It was a very good conference, and I would be more than happy to share what I've learned with any of you, just to let me know.
You looking at me?
Just a reminder to get um David's review paperwork to me by Friday.
By Friday or Friday. Fine.
Chief? Great. Lori? Public Works? Chief of Police?
We got one week left and the students go home.
We talked about that last week. I know. All right. I have a couple of things. Um, number one, last week I testified before the House Capital Campaign Committee. Um, we have three quarters of our legislators committed to it, but probably not going to see any money of the five point seven, so remain extension. Um, I was last described as each party gets like thirty or forty million just distributed among their districts for different projects and it, we're a, we're a long shot at this point. Um, I mean, I'll talk to legislators again. They only have like six days left before they have to close the session and bonding is like their last thing on the list. They have to get a, I mean, they'd like to get a bonding bill done. So I don't know if anybody wants to talk about the USPS delivery issues. Is you, you don't have to, but I want to say we had some delivery issues with our utility bills in USPS. And I'll tell you how bad it is because I got a letter in the mail today. It was postmarked to like Dick Wilson in Fridley. That ended up in my post, in my mailbox. So I'm serious. I looked at it like, boy, this isn't even close. But I know we've had some issues with the USPS that we've escalated. So, um, that was just the funny story. Anyway, last Monday we had, or last Tuesday, we had the six city meeting here and the Minnesota Cities presented on cannabis and, uh, bonding and some of the other, uh, legislative issues that are going on. And I thought that was pretty, pretty good of them to do that. Um, Human Services, uh, group was here for some community outreach and some, I know Kelly and Kevin both attended that. Joe Tom Block sounds like it's on track, like, uh, the stars are aligning and everybody wants to be in the dunk tank. What I got from Andrew. Uh, League of Minnesota City Summer Conference is June twenty-sixth to twenty-eighth. So you, you've never been to one. You should, you know, you should think about attending. This year it's in Rochester and, and there's always some good networking that goes on. Uh, the CGMC, the Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities Conference is July twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth in Wade Park in Saint Joe. And really it'd be nice if, again, counselors, uh, would show up. Um, again, nice networking and they, they're expecting really big crowds. And on a personal note, um, I'm not seeking reelection for an eighth term. This is my last year. So. I think Florida. I don't know. No, no, they tried that a long time ago. I chose not to. So anyway, anybody else, counselors, anything? Yeah, Bob.
Mr. Chief. If you read the newsletter last week, there was a interesting letter to the editor there.
I have not seen that yet. It's on my desk, but I have not read it.
Oh, well, then if you haven't read it, you aren't going to comment on it. Okay, so.
If you want to summarize it, you can.
Has, has the, uh, the ability to stop on a stop sign, has the laws changed on that? That's the gist of the letter. Okay.
I'm assuming this is the same email from a, a citizen that's.
Probably, probably.
Yep.
So I'm just, you know, being with a little bit of sarcasm, like the letter was, you know, have the laws changed? If so, please inform us.
Everybody's got an opinion on those and we've responded back to them accordingly. So.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, the only other comment is coming in as an, as an outsider here. Um, you know, I, I grew up in, you know, obviously in Hutchinson, but I've been away for quite a while, you know, back in the area. The one thing I will say is I have never seen red lights burned as much as I have in Saint Cloud. It is, it is to the point where I wait when it's green and I still wait and I look.
Serious. It's normal.
Florida is.
That's the truth.
Um, our park meeting, um, went really well. We actually, Rhonda took us out to, um, what's the new word? River?
River's Ben.
River's Ben. Thank you. Um, and really got to, as, as a board, got to go out there and really eyeball it and look at what we could possibly be able to do out there, which was kind of exciting, got us all, um, um, on the right track. And then we went out to Kleinfelter. So we're excited to be able to watch Ryan's group, um, get that trail going for us again too, and really coming up with some great, uh, playground equipment out there, hopefully within the next three years. And then of course, um, yeah, put it on the calendar, the eighteenth is our movie night out at Millstream. So if you can help volunteer, we'd love to have you or bring out kiddos.
Yeah, Ken.
So, uh, Ryan or Randy, how many pickleball courts are we building at? Three?
There, there, one facility, three courts. Yes.
Why three? I mean, that's all we have room for?
Yeah. Well, with the golf, uh, disc golf too.
I could show you a picture if.
No, that's all right. It's just an odd number. I thought it'd be four or six.
You're right.
Yeah, usually is.
All right.
We're going to have three there and then three way on the other side of the park. I get it.
I'm good.
Okay.
You're right, Kevin. It is an odd.
Item.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by aye. Aye. Close, we adjourn. Thank you all very much.